Okay. I'm gonna call the meeting to order. Thank you. The February 4th council meeting to order, like to say pledge of allegiance, so please stand for the pledge of allegiance. Thank you, everyone. Sorry about the late, we had some really good workshops, so we went a little bit long and everybody watching from home, they can see it's picture day here for the city. Everybody looks so nice up here, so we're ready to go for that. So, can you call it an order, please?
Councilmember Nordby.
Here.
Councilmember Woods.
Here.
Councilmember McKenzie.
Here.
Councilmember Schwer.
Here.
Mayor Mange.
Here.
Thank you very much. Can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
I will motion for that.
Councilmember Woods, second.
I will second.
Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor. Consent agenda. Item A, January 21st, 2025 workshop minutes. Item B, January 21st, 2025 regular meeting minutes. Item C, general claims of $4,668,617.29. Item D, HRA claims of $17,467.06. Item E, amend ordinance, chapter 117 on liquor license setbacks. Item F, approved temporary liquor license, church and school of St. Peter's Annual Gala, February 22nd of 2025. Item G, approval on sale and Sunday liquor license for Puzzle Sports Bar and Banquet. Item H, electric purchase, 25 pad mount transformers. Item I, electric custom flatbed for F-550 purchase request as part of the CIP. Item J, city council staff goal setting retreat, which is February 11th of 2025.
Thank you, Brian. Anyone want to pull anything at this time? If not, can I get a motion to adopt the agenda, please?
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Schwer.
Second.
Second. Councilmember McKenzie, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All right. Next is open to the public at 6:40. John Schmal. Welcome.
Evening, Mayor, council. I don't know how many of you received a, what is it, eight and a half, but it's probably even 20, envelope with, from a local plumbing organization or company. I'm getting no's on that. Anyway, it is from a plumbing company. And it starts off with, your home is in a neighborhood where we've recently repaired the main sewer line at one or more residences. Well, I haven't seen any of that going on in my area. But anyway, it goes on to say that when homes in your neighborhoods was, or built, the main sewer lines were commonly made of clay pipe or cast iron section. BS. I, I called the, your building inspecting company, talked to a master plumber and said, when did you have, when were clay pipes and cast irons stopped? And he said, in the 50s. So, they start right off with two items that are questionable to get into your house and probably upsell you. And I can't believe that I'm sitting here with the only person who received this letter. So I guess I'm really lucky. And what they're saying is that they will scope your pipe, your sewer pipe, give it a colonoscopy and, for free. Now, I know there's no such thing as a free lunch. I was told that when I was a kid. There's no such thing as a free lunch. So I'd be aware of this. And yesterday was a follow-up. This time saying only clay pipes, didn't talk about cast iron pipes. So I questioned the yes of them.
Good to know, thank you.
Thanks for the heads up.
I'll go home and look, see if we got it. I appreciate it.
I haven't seen it.
This came, the letter was January 13th.
Oh, that was a long, yeah.
No, I never saw it.
My wife probably threw it away.
This one came yesterday.
Oh.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right. That is it for... Back to you.
All right, thank you. We have one item on the business action items. Item A is adopt ordinance enacting chapter 126, mobile food vendor license. We have Chief Malinger here to speak to that.
Hello. Hello.
Hello.
Hi, Mayor, council members. Yeah, here today on behalf of myself, our department, Captain Brent Fixon here, one of our fire inspectors as well, and our community development department, to talk a little bit about the mobile food truck vendor license and to obviously answer any questions that you may have regarding it. I can get long-winded that time, but I have a lot of background kind of going into putting this together. If you like me, would like me to start from the beginning a little bit.
Please.
So, yeah, for sure. Within the, the fire service, and I would say it, for me, it goes back definitely to about 10 years ago when locally in Lakeville, there was a food truck explosion. And that happened in a residential area that affected 11 homes and displaced three families. That was kind of the onset in the local fire service to really start taking a look at, at these things and realize we haven't been doing our duty and, and keeping an eye on, on that. And obviously, that was quite some, some years ago that that has happened, but it's always been a concern of ours to be able to look at and address as, as we were able to within our fire department. I'd like to say we're doing good things on the inspection sides with rental licensing and commercial and pre-planning and, and the like. And it took some time to kind of get here. This has always been an area that we would have liked to address, especially with the majority of what we see in the city of North St. Paul for food trucks comes at the car show, the history cruisers car show. There are other events where they certainly show up, whether it's a city event or other community events, but predominantly, the bigger issue is with the, among the people and the, the trucks that we have for the car show. So we've never really had a procedure or a policy in place to really how to deal with these or inspect these previously. And it wasn't until last year, after we have additional staff back, to be able to kind of broaden our horizons a little bit. And we, I decided with our team that we need to start looking at these. However, we, again, we didn't have a specific food truck ordinance or policy that directed us. And even though Minnesota State Fire Code is what we follow and what we're looking for, there wasn't that foothold, if you will, to, to go out there and look at these units. So, last year, by way of our event permit with the city and the code, or in the code compliant, not, sorry, our community development department, working with Sarah and the staff there, along with the history cruisers to get the list of, of vehicles that were going to be, our team started doing inspections of these units. And we were just basically inspecting them from the fire code standpoint and making sure that they were safe. There was no fee associated with that whatsoever. We knew we didn't have anything specifically in place for this, but we felt it was a necessary need to get done. So we did what we had to do. So backing up to this past summer is when we really started, along with Riley and Jack, to focus on putting together an ordinance. And we've been working together to put this together. And I should also say that our fire inspectors, Brent, has worked with our local Ramsey County fire inspectors as well and adjacent communities in Washington County, Oakdale and, and Lake Elmo. Because one of our main concerns is we wanted to make sure we were doing a good service to those that needed to have the inspections, inspection done. Because we knew they were going to be going to other communities as well. So we felt, we're all looking at the same thing, can we all be using the same inspection and form? They also got the state fire marshal included in on this and trying to help direct and, and get somewhere. So still in that progress, but all of the inspectors and fire marshals within Ramsey County are basically on board. So if somebody goes to Maplewood and has an inspection done, and they have that form and it's completed, then they have a license. If they were to submit that to us, the team would look at that and we would go, yep, you guys meet the requirement. You don't have to come in here with your food truck for us to look at it and vice versa. We'd be sharing our inspection information with other departments as well, just to try to help lessen the burden, at least on some of these units that were coming in. So that was an area that we took as well. And so since then, the focus has been really to make sure that the safety and the liability of the city is, is being met. We focused in on a few areas within the code as well to help protect our businesses, if you will, so that if a food truck wants to come into the city, and we don't see this because we don't have large gatherings enough other than at the car show or something like that, but it wouldn't allow a couple of food trucks to just show up and park outside of Max Dyna, right? They would need to get approval from Max to do that. They would need to get a license from us. It puts some things into place so that we can monitor what's going on. And we felt that what we have in this code kind of directly correlates to what's going on in our city. This one is very similar to our neighbors, I believe in Oakdale. And it's a little bit different in Maplewood because we learned this today, that Maplewood has their own health inspector along with St. Paul. So they do theirs a little bit differently, but nonetheless, they have a process for it. And this is kind of laid out in ours. So that's my long-winded story of how we got here. And I'm more than willing to answer any questions that you may have.
Now, does Ramsey County have the same thing set up for through the state fairgrounds? Being that's a St. Paul Ramsey County area. Do they inspect all those food trucks where, once they get inspected, would they be, could be put onto your list or Washington County's list? But, because I think once they go fuel their, their tanks on their trucks, I think they have to have some type of an inspection almost each time they go and fuel their LP tanks.
So I'm, I'm not sure about every time when they, they refuel their tanks, but that definitely is an item on their list that they look at is the, the tanks.
Unless they're checking to make sure they're a licensed food vendor in their area. That could be what they're doing too.
Yes, and within ours, that is something that staff would be doing, you know, between our fire inspectors and most likely Sarah and community development, to be looking at. And we've been learning a lot lately about different types of licenses from the state, whether or not it's the Minnesota Department of Ag license, or whether or not it's a Ramsey County license and temporary licenses that they had for the health side of things. Looking to make sure that they have those in place and then looking to see if they have had inspection done. So if a unit had that completed and had an inspection done, say with St. Paul Fire, we would definitely take that information, look at it and potentially, you know, sign off on it without making them come in to do it. It, it becomes a little bit more difficult when it's going to be something that's set up on site, like a, a tent or a stand.
Right. For the, for the vehicles that come in, they get, the car show gets you a, a complete list of how many they're gonna set up in the city, right?
That's my understanding is that they'll be signing up.
They inspect each one of them, so they get their license to sell food here in the city for the car show. Now, if any of those vendors go to, let's say, a church function, would that be an okay? As long as they have that permit, would they be able to do like North Haven or St. Mark's? If they do any, St. Pete's, they do their fall festival?
Yeah.
Food trucks?
Yes. So, once they receive from us our food truck license, they're, they can go anywhere for an entire year within, within the city.
Within a year's period, each year, they have to have a new one.
The only caveat for them is, is obviously whatever event they would be a part of, they would have to be part of that event permit, whatever.
Right.
Church, school.
Right, for whatever days or hours they require it.
Correct, correct. But our inspection, whenever it is done, so if it's, our goal is to have it start April 1st, so it gives them time, obviously, before things really wrap up. And potentially even apply, you know, at this time throughout the year and the future, to get it completed so that when things start going, they're, they're able to hit, hit the ground running and go.
Now, would this also include like vendors that come in and do the kettle popcorn under the tents and that? Is that something that would be in, in, and then maybe, I don't know if they do hot dog stands? I haven't been to car show.
Yeah, yeah. So anything that is a tent or a stand, something of the like, it would. The difference is, is it's gonna, we've talked about this, but it's going to require potentially a little bit more conversation with that person just because we're going to have to do the first inspection, you know, once they set it up. So we'd like to have conversations with them beforehand, maybe walking them through what we would like to see, allowing them to ask us some questions, hey, I'm gonna have propane, a burner, these types of things, what should I be doing? Because in that scenario, if, if it's the first Friday night car show and they're asking us to come out at four o'clock to look at things and we go out there and look at it and there's a problem and they can't fix it, they're not going to be able to work.
Now, even like the rib guy up by the east end of town there, I know he's got his LP tanks out there and that. That's something that he should have set up and have inspected prior to the first night of the car show.
Yes, again, yeah.
Thanks, because when we read through this, there was a lot of questions and a couple of residents reached out, you know, it was just a, a grab for another license. Well, it's, you can use the Ramsey County. If you just want to do North St. Paul, you can do it with us. If you do Ramsey County, it flows through. So it's one of those things where it's not just every single city, they gotta grab this. So to me, that's comfortable because it's not every time they do something, they gotta register with somebody else. If, if they want to be, just be in North St. Paul, fine, you know, we can do it. If they wanna, you know, if they're gonna be going around, which they probably are with, you know.
Yeah. And we, Brent, reached out to, maybe you want to talk about the Ramsey County and how you talked to them about the different permits, what they approve from the ag and the temporary ones? If, would you like to, yeah?
Because it sounds like ag trumps a lot of things.
Yeah, so if you have, I don't know if I need that.
Oh, yeah, you do.
Do I need to go on this thing? So, yeah, there's a couple of different licenses. They have a temporary license that you can get through Ramsey County through the health, and that goes for one to two days. And it's based upon, well, the fees are a little bit different, but then it goes on what kind of food you have. So basically going off of its time, temperature sensitive, you know? So there's a whole different list that goes into that, seafood, poultry, eggs, some different produce and some vegetables and stuff like that that require the temperatures. But, so there's one way to go through Ramsey County. You can get the Ramsey County license and then you're good in Ramsey County. But for places like you're saying, that like to go to the state fair, these other place, they get the Minnesota Department of Agriculture and then that is recognized statewide versus if you're just looking to go here. So, and they have their licensing process, they go through it. They do a lot of the, a lot of this health, sanitary, what's on the menu items, things like that. So, yeah, that's a lot with that. It's really all family is for their process, it's pretty straightforward.
Appreciate all the, you know, looking into this. This was something where, you know, we all eat over in different places and trucks, we want to make sure everything is, is good. And it's nice to see there's a hierarchy too, as far as being able to get the, the proper licenses, far as statewide, all the way down to citywide.
Oh, like, and that's what Jason, like he already said, basically going into this, working with our neighbors, it was nice to get everybody together. We had a big meeting, we talked about what people are doing, what they're not doing, who would like to be a part of it. So getting everybody, at least for the most part in Ramsey County together, that would take the same form that we all put together and recognize it amongst each other, I think that's.
Do they charge a fee through the county and these other facilities, towns and that?
I'm sorry.
Is there a fee that they charge for the inspections?
For this inspection, yes.
Okay.
Yep.
What would that be?
Eighty bucks, eighty dollars.
Bucks?
Yeah.
That's our, our fee.
That's our fee that we're looking, we've checked other places and it's, it's below what most places are.
Ours is, ours is below what most places are.
And I'm sure ag, the whole statewide's even more. So, I mean, it goes by what you're going to be doing and where you're going to be traveling to.
Yep, exactly.
Can you speak to the differences? My assumption is completely separate from the inspection that you guys want to do to the Minnesota Department of Health. Because their, my understanding is their inspection has to happen every time they set up. Is that accurate?
I believe the difference from, I, I believe it's in the aspect of that temporary permit, not in the inspection of their large annual. Although I would have to double check that. Because my understanding is with the temporary permit, that could be for a specific date or time. Again, maybe not necessarily for a food truck. It may be more for a stand of sorts. And that would be the reasoning for maybe having to come out. Because I don't know why a food truck wouldn't necessarily, yeah. But I would have to double check, double check that with the health department.
So, and I, I guess where I'm going with it too, because I, having some experience with food trucks at my venues, they do also check the ANSL system at these. And then would the Minnesota Health Department work with you? So my understanding is the, the process, if I own a food truck, I call up the Minnesota Department of Health and say, I'm going to be at such and such a location at such a time. And there's an inspector that will meet me out there and they have to sign off before I can start selling food. Is the Minnesota Department of Health willing to have your permit as part of this process to go, wait a minute, before I can even come out and inspect you for the health inspection, I see that you're not on this list, you need to go to.
Sure.
Somewhere within the county first and get your, once a year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Fire safety.
Councilmember Nordby, I'm tracking what you're saying there. We have worked very closely with Ramsey County, even more so recently, but have in the past. And definitely, I believe they would, would work with us on that. Vice versa, we've had to do the same where a few years ago, you know, if we come across issues where somebody doesn't have a health one, that we have to, you know, let them know. So it is, as odd as it may seem, for the fire department to be working with the health department regarding food, we do. Because whether it's, you know, within a rental property where somebody's illegally selling and cooking and doing things, that's a concern because it's a health and safety thing or in a, a business. So we would definitely reach out and let our contact know to, to the same. But I was not aware that they would be coming out every time they get set up. But I would say from the application that they have, I could understand that too, because it's very in-depth.
When I set up events, usually I, I'm asking my food truck drivers, hey, when can you start serving? And they're always like, then the inspector's not here yet, you gotta give me a couple of minutes. So from the best of my knowledge, they are inspected every single time.
Okay.
They are at a location. And this is a health inspection.
Yeah.
And with that, would you be willing to reach out to ensure that your ANSL requirements for your inspection matches theirs? I, I don't want a food truck going to you and you passing, them coming to a different place of business and then the, the Minnesota Department of Health saying, no, your ANSL system, am I pronouncing that right?
Yeah, for sure.
Isn't, so if you guys could be on the same standard, I, I think that would be awesome.
Do you have anything to add for that?
Yeah, so no matter what, when we're going to do our food truck inspections, we go through the unit. We have a whole checklist and we can, you can see this online on Open Gov or you can check this out. It goes through the whole process here. So along with the fire extinguishers, ANSL system's definitely one of the things that needs to be annually checked and serviced by a licensed technician. So we make sure that is tagged. If it's not tagged by a service technician along with their fire extinguishers, they'll need to do that.
Yeah, and, and that's perfect, exactly what I was asking, just, you know, opening the line of communication with them to go, you know, when, when they change that, it has to be serviced by a licensed tech every, is it three years right now for their systems?
Depends, but it's usually yearly, annually.
Okay. You know, just to make sure we're asking for the same things that the Minnesota Department of Health will be asking for.
Yep. Yeah, see, I noticed too on their temporary food license, what you were referring to is if you're doing the temporary food license, depending on your food, if it's at temperature sensitive, whatever it is, that certain type of food, it does require you to call two days, you gotta notify them. First of all, you have to fill out this lengthy thing of everything, but then give them a two-day heads up so I think that they can come out and inspect during that time. And I don't know if that's any different with the other ones, but, yeah.
And then there's nothing in our, the one we're passing, right now, there's a 30-day moratorium? It's not the right word, but a maximum of 30 days. thirty-day moratorium, it's not the right word, but a maximum of thirty days, whether it's consecutive or separate even, for per location. There's nothing in our ordinance that would change that, correct?
Not that I, not that I have seen, but I don't know if we'd ever have the problem of something running consecutively that long.
Well, or, or, so, let's just say, if we had thirty Friday night car shows-
Yep.
Let's say we had thirty-one Friday night car shows, a truck could only do thirty of them, in the state of Minnesota, the way it's written right now, because it needs to be a temporary location.
Okay.
If, if we're, if we're permitting as a city, I just want to make sure nothing in our permit is stronger or more restrictive than the state.
No.
But right now, as a food truck in the state of Minnesota, you can only be at a location for a maximum of thirty days, whether it's thirty different days or consecutive.
Yeah, so I think with the regular license, I could look on that. I know the temporary one is twenty-one days within a calendar year.
Mm-hmm.
So, I'm, I'm not sure about the thirty. Maybe that's what the normal agriculture license you're talking about, for, or for the county? Oh, we don't have anything.
Yeah, as far as I'm seeing here, and Jack, maybe if you are aware, I don't think we have anything in there that's specific to days, I'm looking under licensing procedure.
I don't believe we have anything in the ordinance as currently drafted, no.
Yeah.
That's where we look, towards the county and the agricultures for those type of things. Makes sense?
Now, will these vending trucks that want to be inspected through our city, will they bring them to your fire hall and do them in the back or inside, or?
Yeah, typically, that's what they do. They, the trucks come here, and we'll inspect them here. Unless, last year, they didn't come, then we showed up to their doorstep, out in the street, and sometimes that was okay, and sometimes they ended up having to leave.
Preferably, it'd be nice to get it all set up prior. That's where the car show should be up on, and just say, you know, our city wants to get the fire, our inspections going. If you want to sell here, let's get it done, so you're ready to go.
How many does the city license compare to people that already have the Ramsey, the county or the agriculture? How does that break down? Any ideas?
As far as, maybe how-
People just want us to, you know, just to do it for North St. Paul, and they don't care about, like, their, you know, how many people just go directly to North St. Paul instead of the county, or that?
I would say, I think last year, we did about a dozen to fifteen.
Yeah, we're close to twenty.
Okay, closer to twenty, that-
Which is pretty good for-
Yeah. Those are just pretty much focused on our area, so I was wondering, is there a lot of people that just say, you know what, I just do the car show, or I do this, but I don't care about anything else?
Yeah, the, obviously, the majority of them were from the car show, but a few of them for autumn arts festival and-
Oh, yeah.
-stuff like that.
Smaller ones, they have to do that, yeah.
That's a convenience thing, I think, too.
Sure.
It's nice having us as an option versus needing to go somewhere else. I know we did one, two, since it's right here in town, we just went over there, went to the place, and I think it was up on your end there, so, and did our inspection for that one.
Oh, yeah, and Lake Boulevard.
Yeah.
All right. Well, I'm just glad we were able to talk about this. This was something that we needed to pull out, and, you know, I'm, thank you, the manager Randall, to be able to do this, because anytime there's an, you know, something like this big, it's just great to have this explanation and understand, and everybody is clear, because it's, there's money exchanging hands, and how is it, you know-
Yeah.
... and everything else.
I think it's really gonna help overall with staff, not just on our end, but also in community development, on guiding us, because it'll help clean up events and vendors, and we're, we're looking to make things clear directives, and just help kind of clean things up.
Especially as an ordinance now. I mean, it's something where there's some monetary, plus, you know, just to understand it completely, or at least as much as, he knows, Councilmember Norby knows a lot more than we do, so thank you for sharing your knowledge with it too, because I would think that you would get a food inspection once, and you'd be good for the year. But, you know, that type of thing, which it's under, you know, you're moving around, I guess there's a bit more. So, appreciate everybody's talking about it.
With our relationship with the History Cruisers, my, is it safe to assume that you'll be sending this ordinance once approved to Bob, and then, obviously, Bob has a really good relationship with his vendors, that he'd be able to pass this forward?
Yeah, and we've, they've had meetings already with the Cruisers and, and have talked about this a little bit, so they're expecting it.
Perfect.
Communication, it's a good thing. Thank you. Any other questions for anybody? All right. Appreciate you getting into it, and thanks for all the research and getting around.
Do we have to approve?
Yep, we're gonna do that next, yeah. So, but I just wanted to, you know, appreciate all the legwork you did. So, can I get a motion to approve the ordinance 126?
So moved.
So move, Councilmember Woods?
Second.
Second, Councilmember McKenzie? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None? Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate the time.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry, I got a cough drop. I was, thought I was gonna make it through, but I couldn't quite do it.
Are you guys gonna have little packets and that set up, so vendors can come in, stop and get the paperwork, so they can get set up on it and get you guys scheduled in?
It'll be set up. Sarah's been working with Open Gov to set it up online, so that-
Okay, oh, good.
-it'll be done that way, and we can communicate with them.
Okay, perfect.
Whether it's email through Open Gov, or having their information to give them a call, but definitely.
Okay, great. Awesome. Thanks again for the work, appreciate it.
Yeah, definitely, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
All right, City Manager.
All right. Reports, City Manager and Departments. So, this week, later this week, probably Thursday, Friday, we'll be, they'll be installing that glass along the two counters, as you come into City Hall there, for the community development side and the finance side. I think that'll look nice as well. We got fifty building permits for the month of January that came in through the city.
What was that, fifty building permits?
Building permits, yep. Yeah, kind of a busy for January. And just kind of a heads up with the, as you, if you've gone by, it's kind of protected, but down there at McKnight Fields, we've been storing all of our tree trimmings and tree, tree removals down there. It's quite a pile. It's quite a pile for us, but it, it's not that big for, trying to get contractors in here, they bring in those barrel grinders and, or tub grinders, and it's not cheap either. So, we went out and got a couple of quotes, one of them came in at around thirty grand, the lower one came in around fifteen, but those stump grinders, you know, they can burn fifty gallons of diesel an hour at those rates. And the problem is, you know, we had a nice early spring and good weather, and so there was a lot of tree trimming that was done early. They stopped, they shut down some of the places because they're, they filled up with all of the trees. It sounds like Pig's Eye, they're in the process of changing out the burners down there that they use to burn that. But that company will come in, they'll set up, they'll grind it all and haul it away, and that'll be somewhere between fifteen to eighteen is the cheapest we found for that, so. So, that's more to, after they get that full, then they'll be out to do that, so. It'll be there for a little bit. And of course, electric departments and tree trimmen, we do that quite a bit this time of year. They had gone around, gotten several quotes, they've gotten five of the twelve lights that'll be put up at Casey Lake Trail right now. They were waiting on getting other quotes to see if other lights might be more appropriate, less expensive ones. After going out and get the quotes, they found that the lights that we have now, as expensive as they are, are the cheaper options. So, we're just gonna put them up, so there'll be seven more lights that'll be added to what's out there now.
This is where at Casey, in the Park Park, or down by the hockey rinks and that, or?
It's a walking path, isn't it?
Walk, walk.
It's the walking path. So, it'll be from about Seventeenth, and it'll go circle around the backside to where the lift station is, is where it'll land. We stopped there because as you start going past that, and now you're getting into people's backyards, and we don't want to light up any houses. Ava's been busy, still updating the website. Did her business highlight this week, went down to Sweet Nothing's Bakery, so they'll be featured in the newsletter tomorrow. Also, Fire Nice is coming up this Friday, so that'll be nice to have. The, that'll be from five to nine that will be out there. PD, Chiefs away this week on training, but they did have good luck with their last posting for, I think they got three for investigators and three for patrol, so it's nice to see the applications come in. Public Works been busy with student belt, they're starting to heat the inside now, so they're doing drywall and taping, and I think I mentioned it before, maybe newsletter to you guys or weekly update, but unfortunately, the kids came in and stole the copper of the water main running into the house, or the water service running into the house, so. I think they just picked up and bent it back and forth till it broke, so they don't know if they're gonna have to go all the way back to the shut-off, or what they're gonna have to do, but it's unfortunate.
Pretty soon, you have to put a ten-foot fence around these buildings.
Yeah. Yeah, he brought those EFDs earlier, that's a really nice deal. Being that's a city project, we can fund the majority of that. So, I think out of that fifty thousand plus project, we're gonna be able to cover thirty to thirty-five thousand of it, and it's money we have to spend anyway, so we're helping ourselves out, so it's really nice. And the variable frequency drive, what it is, is normally you have these very large motors, and if they just boom, start up one hundred percent, I mean, that's a huge load that's drawn on, and the, the variable drives just do it at lower speeds, so you're not having that high inrush. So, it does save money for, through electricity as well. WSB is at ninety percent complete plans for the road reconstruction for this year, and they'll be going out for bids here, probably early next month, so that's moving along. They did a bunch of tree trimmen at Casey Lake as well, they had, I think, fifty-some trees to take down there, they finished that, and they moved down to Southwood Park now. But they could be there forever, so. That's all I have for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Now, reports, commissions and committees. Councilmember Schwer.
Parks and Rec met, I feel like it was a month ago, but it wasn't, a couple weeks ago, on the twenty-sixth, I believe. HGA came and wrapped up their final presentation. I know there's a few little things in there, but with our park, it's on the tip of my tongue. The park survey result, no, the, the-
Feasibility-
Thank you, the feasibility studies. Forgive me, please, clearly I can't speak tonight. They are wrapped up, so I look forward to hopefully having them come here at the council to present those three areas. So, it's a, it looks, they look good. So, you can view it online if you'd like, but it looks, looks pretty good. Also, yeah, Rachel, we brought in a new commission member, Rachel Lucas, she started, and we turned over chairs, so Lloyd is no longer a chair, he's just a sitting voting member. But we have Laura Greenley Karp, who is the new chair, and the vice chair is Sarah Zaradka. And Brian, are you touched on it? We have Fire and Ice this weekend, so, oh, at Casey, so, come and take it out, come and check it out. The reason why it's not at Housie, this is a big point of contention, and they were like, why isn't it at Housie? It's because of the, the ADA, we had to turn, we couldn't do the ice rink out there anymore. So, that's why it's over at Casey.
That on the old field, so, but now they would be damaging grass from burning all that, so they're not doing it there, they'll take it out to Casey Lake, yeah.
Yep. And then, I'm glad you mentioned something about the lights, because that was another question that Parks and Rec had, at our meeting, was, when are we gonna get the newer lights, so?
That is going out for, being that they know the vendor now that they're gonna get it, so they're gonna place that order. Hopefully, they can be here within a month, and we can have them up within a couple weeks after that.
Perfect.
Yep.
That's what I got.
Thank you very much. HDA won't meet until middle of March sometime there. Thank you.
Arts and Culture Commission will meet tomorrow.
All right, thank you very much.
The Planning Commission would normally meet two days from now, Thursday, February sixth. However, the Planning Commission meeting has been canceled due to lack of agenda items.
Okay, thank you very much. General Business, Councilmember Schwer, anything?
I got nothing.
All right, kid.
I got nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Nothing? The only thing I have is, when we had coffee with the council, it was very nice to be able, we had some residents show up for that, so it was very enjoyable to be able to have a little chat, so that, that went well. And I think Ava's gonna be working on more of that type of thing, where we can have some time together, and, under, as a council, and being able to, be able to meet with some people on different ways.
Indeed.
If there's else-
That'd be a nice place to have a meet with a cop, too.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. So, if nothing else, our next meeting is February eleventh, and I will ask for adjournment. Motion?
A motion.
Okay. Councilmember McKenzie, second?
Second.
Second, Councilmember Norby, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, none, better not be. We'll see you on the eleventh. Thanks, everyone.
Thank you.